Mr. Washworth.
Sure, um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Washworth. Mr. Clerk, proceed.
Good evening, once again, honorable city council members, Mr. Mayor, Madam Treasurer, administrative staff, and all of the listening audience. Today is Monday, January fourth, twenty twenty-one, and this is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting telecommunication platform. The meeting ID is eight three two, two six eight three, six six nine eight. This meeting is being held in accordance with Public Act two fifty-four of twenty twenty, Senate Bill twelve forty-six, and the remote participation in public meetings policy adopted by City Council on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, with the resolution number twenty dash three five five, which permits the remote attendance by members of a public body using telephonic or video conferencing means in certain circumstances, and to allow the bit, uh, public business of the Romulus City Council to be conducted in a manner that permits both the general public and members of the public body to participate by electronic means under circumstances allowed by law. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join the meeting by phone, dial one, six four six, five five eight, eight six, five six. When prompted, enter the meeting ID, eight three two, two six eight three, six six nine eight, followed by the pound sign. To join the meeting online or from the Zoom meeting application, click on the URL link provided on the city's website, or click Join a Meeting from the Zoom Meeting Application, and enter the meeting ID, once again, eight three two, two six eight three, six six nine eight, when prompted. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion. Uh, Mr. Chair, roll call was taken at the previous special meeting held at six P M., and there is still a quorum for tonight's meeting. Tonight's agenda is as followed. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Number five, mayor's report. Number six, clerk's report. Number seven, treasurer's report. Number eight, public comment. Number nine, unfinished business. Number ten, new business. Number eleven, communication. And number twelve, adjournment and a motion is in order to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Part. It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Okay, I can hear you, Ms. Williams.
Okay.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
The chairverse, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next on the agenda item is approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll approve the minutes for the council meeting on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
Part. Been motioned by Mr. Washworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe.
Ms. Abdo.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Abdo. For approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Abstain.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is no petitioners for tonight's meeting, which brings us to number four, chairperson's report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We had a study session tonight on the thirty-first District Court midterm financial presentation. I'd like to say that, uh, you know, this pandemic is is really tough out here. I noticed that, uh, Ms. Tally, Councilwoman Tally, always saying that, hey, this is serious. Uh, people are dying. Uh, we gotta take this seriously. And I agree with her. We lost a, a mayor, a mayor in Dearborn Heights. His funeral, I think, was today. You know, I want everybody to realize, now I lost my brother-in-law on COVID nineteen. This stuff is really serious. And, uh, we had a councilperson that had COVID uh, nineteen. And I'm so happy and glad, grace of God, that he recovered. I just wanna say everybody keep in prayer, and let's stick together and try to beat this thing.
Amen.
And this is all the, that's the conclusion of chairperson's report.
I'd like to make that motion, accept your chairperson, uh, report, Mr. Chair, amen.
Thank you. Part. It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair ver, chair vote, yes. Thank you. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This brings us to agenda item number five, the mayor's report.
Evening, City Council, uh, Treasurer, Deputy Clerk, listening audience, uh, and all our staff that's on the call as well. A happy new year to everyone. Um, I didn't bring a quote, but I brought just a one-line scripture from Psalm twenty verse four that I thought was fitting with the new year. May he give you the desire of your heart and make all your plans succeed. And I thought that's a good positive looking forward, uh, scripture. Uh, I wanted to thank Chief of Staff, Julie White-Tocco, for giving my report on the twenty-eighth. Thank you. We have a great team, and I appreciate her stepping up. Uh, tonight, really, I just have some appointments and reappointments, uh, before you. Uh, the first one that you have, City Council, is actually, uh, two different motions because the, the terms vary. Uh, so what's before you is a, um, uh, recommendation, uh, for a, to concur with the administration to reappoint Chris Dunn, Dures Green, Reverend Edward Thomas, to the Housing Commission. Uh, that term is to expire February twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Roscoe?
I'll make that motion to concur with administration and reappoint Chris Dunn, Dures Green, and Reverend Edward Thomas to the Romulus Housing Commission with a term to expire on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Support. Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, to concur with administration and reappoint Chris Dunn, Dures Green, and Reverend Edward Thompson to the Romulus Housing Commission with a term to expire on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion?
Through the chair, I guess I have a question.
Yes, uh, Ms. Ms. Webb.
Excuse me. A, a five-year terms, uh, mayor on these, uh, on this housing commission? That that doesn't.
Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Those are the, the normal published terms. We didn't change those, so, uh, the next.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was saying. I know, I know you didn't change them. They've always been that way. But, um, I hadn't picked up my packet, so I wasn't able to call you ahead of time. But, uh, personally speaking, I feel that that's, that's a mighty long term, especially when you are appointed by an administration, because your terms run for years, for years, for years. Whereas, you know, other peoples are running five. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, because that is, that is something that I think we should look into. I don't have a problem with the appointees. It's just the, um, the, the years. Yes. Through the chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Williams.
As Ms. Webb said, I have a problem with the appointees. I know all three of them. My, my, my question is, how did we allow these three individuals terms to expire for, for over eleven months before it was brought back to us?
I don't know, Steve Hitchcock, if you could answer, I know you sit and represent Housing Commission as well as Bob McCray. I know once they came to our office, um, we tried to get them through the process and to City Council's recommendations. I know that the, this term staggered, that's why the second one is, uh, in twenty twenty-six, but I don't know if you can shed your light on that, Steve or Bob, but, um, as soon as I got them, we put them through.
I mean, the only thing I know is that I think they did not pay attention themselves to the fact that their term was expiring and did not make a request timely for the renewal of their t- term.
Okay, but my, my concern is, Mayor, their term expired February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. That's eleven months ago. So you have three individuals making decisions pertaining to the Romulus House Commission, whether it be contracts, whether it be victim, any, individuals. And I'm just saying, we, we brought this to your attention before. No one should be able to sit on no board with an expired term. And you're talking about eleven months, almost, almost a year. That's, that's ridiculous. And, and between the three of them, how did you not know that your term expired, that you go eleven years? I mean, eleven months.
Yeah, I, I can't.
And I understand you say they just brought to your attention, but if I'm not mistaken, we talked about this before, and the clerk was supposed to keep your office as well as the council abreast when the terms expire, so, you know, your office can act on it. And I just thought, and I seen that, that was a bit much that these three individuals have sit there, voted on contracts and just voted on different things that pertain to people livelihood for eleven months.
Yeah, well, well, given point. I, I don't know how much was COVID or versus normal, but I, I think it'd be good to give people a prompt, uh, you know, ahead of time that their term is expiring, so we can either do our due diligence and reappoint them, or open it up for new people. So we'll, we'll make note of that, communicate with the clerk, and see if we can expedite the notifications. But, uh, the terms that were there were not terms that, uh, my office altered or changed at all. We just went with the reappointments as they were notified and brought to us.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, you know, I, I didn't say at all that your office, uh, you know, made no justice to this. I, I was just wondering why, uh, and, and moving forward, we should definitely make sure that this doesn't happen again, that no individual that sit on no board would sit that long with a expired term, but be, still be able to make, you know, to vote and make decisions. I, I think, you know, we should just make sure that we be better on top of that. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can comment real quick, as, as behalf of the Housing Commission, um, I guess we gotta take the bullet on this one. I apologize, um, for the lapse in that. Uh, what we will do is take direction with our formidable, our management group to make sure that we are aware. Uh, five years might be a long time for a commissioner to remember that appointment might expire, but um, when it got brought to our attention that they were expired, we quickly, uh, notified the mayor's office to let them know that we need to take care of it. So I apologize for that, and, uh, we, we will take steps to make sure it does not happen again in the future.
Okay, any other comments? No other comments, uh, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Abstain.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. And the second motion is, uh, again, just a different term, uh, one year longer. This is to reappoint Barbara Sanders and Robert McCray to the Housing Commission. The term expired February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-six.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we, uh, reappoint Barbara Sanders and Robert McCray to the Romulus Housing Commission with the term to expire in February twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-six.
Support. Been motioned by Mr. Washworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, to concur with administration and reappoint Barbara Sanders and Robert McCray to the Romulus Housing Commission with a term to expire on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-six. Any discussion? Here. No discussion. Here, roll call vote. Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Uh, the next one is regarding Planning Commission. Uh, there's just one motion on this one. Uh, the request is to concur with the administration and approve the reappointments of Mike LaFelti, Jerry Frederick, Edna Talon-Jemison, and, uh, Ade Wumi Bobo Ade. He's a new member. Those terms are three years, and to expire on January thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make that, I'd like to make that motion concur with administration and approve the reappointments of Mi- Mike LaFelti, Jerry Frederick, Edna Talon-Jemison, and appointment of Ade, Ade Wume, Boo Boo Ade, um, to the City of Romulus Planning Commission with a three-year term to expire on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Support. It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for the reappointments and appointments to the Planning Commission. Any discussion?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Yes.
And then Ms. uh, Webb, that's a Ms. Abdo.
Thank you. First of all, I think the, um, this should be split up between reappointments and new appointments. I don't think it should be all as one. Secondly, there were five people who applied for the new position on the paint Planning Commission. As a councilperson, before I vote on a new person, I would like to see all of the applications that, you know, and how we came about this. So I don't wanna vote for this together, first of all. I think it should be separated. And secondly, I'd like to see the applications of all the people that apply.
So I could comment on that, Mr. Chairman. I guess part of our process is different for council appointments and mayor appointments. Council, you have your advisory, a recommendation. Uh, we go, and that's again, to protect the candidates that are requesting. Those aren't public information. You make a selection from that. In this case, the electronic application comes in, uh, Carol Mays and Bob McCray are screened, interviewed. I did, uh, follow-up final, uh, interviews, uh, via phone, and then we make a recommendation to you. Uh, so as far as splitting them up, we can do that in the future, but uh, what we actually did with this, we got some other good candidates that they might have been requesting to be on the Planning Commission. And after talking to them, they were a better fit for another board or commission. So that, that process works very well, and those, those will come up in the future for other recommendations for boards and commissions, but with the electronic, uh, application system, this, this worked very well, and I don't think we wanna really start sending individuals' applications, uh, to a bunch of different people when they haven't even gone through that process. So the process of your committee and our process is to respect individuals and try to help get them involved in our community, and, and that's why we do it. We don't, you know, get into that in public meetings or sharing in the public.
I don't feel comfortable, um, voting for someone I know nothing about. Um, the reappointments I have no trouble with, but.
You were provided information in the packet on the application and.
I don't know if he was the best candidate.
He was, or I wouldn't have recommended him.
Yeah.
Actually, I was very impressed with this individual. I think the Planning Commission or Planning Department and, and City Council would be very pleased.
I don't understand why councils left out of this process.
Uh, through the chair for me.
Yes, uh, Ms. Webb.
That's why I love, that's why council is left out of this process, is because it is the mayor's appointment. And if you will go over this person's application.
I did.
He's very, very, it's very impressive. I mean, I think it would be pretty hard to find someone else of his caliber even wanting to be on the Planning Commission because of what he stands for. So I take my hat off to the mayor, because he is trying to get uh, qualified, educated commissioners and committee members on these boards. But as a council wanting to work against them, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why we should be totally involved in this. The only thing that we do is just to vote to either accept it or, or not accept it. I don't think we should question him on whom he recommends to us. That's not our call.
I see my vote is more than a public team.
John?
Go ahead, uh. Virginia, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman with, uh, it's not an issue of going against anything the mayor said. It was a question asked. I called earlier to Carol Mays and just wanted to see who was the other four individuals that requested it. It, it, it's not, we didn't even have to get it electronically. It could have been put in our mailbox, just to see who else, you know, applied for that open seat, that vacancy. Uh, I totally disagree with Ms. Webb. I, I don't think it's trying to do the mayor's job. I don't think it's going against the mayor. But it was just asking a question, so when you vote, you're voting on your good conscience, not just because somebody put something in front of you and said, this is the best decision I made, and either you support it or you don't. We're supposed to ask questions. That's nothing wrong. Uh, it's, excuse me, I'm still speaking, Ms. Webb. We supposed to ask questions. There's nothing wrong with asking questions. It's n- nothing against our mayor at all. I, I see no problem with him going through the process, through the Planning Commission, and whoever else he went through, and it came to him, and he said, hey, this guy's good. I looked at that application. I think it's great. But as me and Councilwoman, uh, Abdo spoke, we were just concerned, like, who are the other four individuals? And it was a question. As council, we're the legislative body. We have a right to ask questions. Whether we get that information or not, our job is to make sure that we're informed and informed properly. Regardless of, look, it's seven of us. And we're never gonna agree on the same thing. That doesn't make any of us wrong, and it definitely doesn't make the mayor wrong. But there's still nothing wrong with asking questions, and I agree with Councilwoman with, uh, Abdo, that the three that we are, uh, reappointing should have been separated from the new uh, candidate that's gonna place, uh, the, uh, vacancy, fill the vacancy. That's just my opinion. We all have an opinion, and we all have one vote. Thank you.
Just explain on the, on the issue.
Now, I just please say something right now.
Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
The question is re- regarding the applicants. Okay, to be informed, sometimes we have to ask. We all have packets. You all received all the information. How come you didn't call the mayor's office or whoever in charge, uh, the committee, and question them about it? Why do we have to come to an open meeting, and then all of a sudden, everybody has, uh, um, you know, we forget. We didn't, we didn't realize that we can call to the mayor's office and, and ask about this. I'm not gonna put anybody up front. That's his job. He made the appointment. If you're so concerned about who applied and who didn't get, you should have called. I believe this packet was to, uh, ready to be picked up last week. So it's gonna take you, uh, two or three days to find out, oh, I think I'd better check the mayor tonight to, uh, to let him know that I don't feel that this person, uh, should be on, on, I mean, this is ridiculous. Come on, guys. This is ridiculous.
Ms. Webb, I did make a phone call to Bob McCray to ask about this, and I also asked for the names of the other people. So please don't start when you don't.
Wait, wait, uh, as a chairman, I'll go cut in.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Uh, Ms. Abdo and other councilpeople, as a chairman, you guys have an opportunity to vet, to vote yes or no about this appointment. So we're gonna move on.
John?
Excuse me, John, we can also have.
Go ahead, whoa, whoa, whoa.
We could also have this discussion, John.
Wait a minute, hold it. I give everybody a chance. If you give me a chance, I give everybody else a chance. Mr. Washworth, go ahead.
Uh, if I can, and I don't disagree with anybody's concerns here, but you know, it's the mayor's appointment, and sometime people that don't get the appointment, maybe they don't want their personal information passed around to city. I mean, they should have some privacy too. But that's just my own opinion.
Thank you.
John, I just wanna say that.
Go ahead.
I, I, I don't disagree, and I wasn't saying that. So I want the mayor to understand this. I'm not agreeing with his appointment. But as I said, and, and for Ms. Webb's information, I did call this day. I, I received my packet on Friday. I didn't wait till the day and go get my packet. So I seen it. And I did call, okay, but I never got a response. And I said that in the beginning of my comment. I don't have a problem, Mayor, with your appointing this guy. I looked over his, his, uh, application, and I think, you know, he's fit for the position, but the con, the, the comment came up of who was the other four. And so that's why I asked Carol Mays today, and she said she was gonna get with your office. I don't know if she did. But she said she was gonna get with your office, and then she'll contact me back. I didn't hear anything back. So that's why I'm saying this. And to Ms. Webb, whatever questions we have up under honor, whatever agenda item we have, we have a vote, and we also have the right for discussion, whether you like it or not. That is our right. You or no one else can take that away. Thanks, John. Okay, through the chair, I'm gonna have to address this, so you can give me a half of a second.
Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
To my colleague, Mrs. Williams, I did not say that. Yes, we all have the right for discussion, and we also have a right to vote. But you're not gonna drag me into this idiotic conversation. Either vote or either just don't say nothing, because I am not gonna go tit-for-tat with you. Not tonight, not me.
Okay, I, I've heard, uh.
Can I take a vote, please?
I, I heard, uh.
Please.
I heard both, a conversation. Can we have a vote now?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
I already voted yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ros, I mean, I'll just.
I know.
You know what I'm saying, Ms. Roscoe?
I do.
Your year.
I do.
Ms. Abdo? Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Uh, that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is the clerk's report. There is one action item under the clerk's report, and it's a public hearing request from, um, Director of Public Services and Economic Development, uh, Robert McCray for February the eighth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. The date and time is available. I do apologize ahead of time. It was brought to my attention that the minutes from the demo, uh, uh, the Construction Board of Appeals was not included in your packet, and I emailed that to you, um, earlier today, so you should have that available. And, um, that is the action item being presented under the clerk's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Ms. Roscoe?
For a public hearing request from Robert McCray, Director of Public Service and Economic Development for February eighth, twenty twenty-one at six o'clock to discuss the demolition derby, demolition derby, demolition, demolition list twenty dash one.
Support.
Feels like, feels like a derby.
I know, right?
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally for a public hearing request from Robert McCray, Director of Public Service and Economic Development for February the eighth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. to discuss demolition list twenty dash one. Any discussion? Here, no discussion, roll. Here no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City, uh, Council. And on behalf of myself as well as, um, Clerk Bragg, I hope everyone had a, a wonderful, joyous New Year. I know we were very exhausted with twenty twenty-one. I was exhausted with twenty twenty-one. I'm definitely looking forward to the flexibility that twenty twen- I mean, uh, yeah, that twenty twenty-one is gonna bring us. Um, so happy New Year to everyone and, um, I look forward to this new year. And that concludes the Clerk's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next on the agenda item is the Treasurer's Report.
Hi, good evening, Council, Mayor, and listening audience, clerk, clerk as well. Um, I just want to remind everyone, I had mentioned, uh, before that, um, we have a new payment option as far as texting. And so I just wanted to go over a couple of things. That way, if anybody had any questions, they could call the office. But I do want, um, residents to know that, um, they can pay by phone. They can check their balance or make a payment twenty-four seven. Um, the phone number for them to call is eight five five seven nine eight, one five two one. This is great, um, if, an example, COVID, um, the building was, um, shut down and, um, this way residents can make that payment twenty-four seven. To pay online, you would need to go to H T T P, um, dot, dot, forward slash, forward slash, W W W dot Romulus gov dot com. And on there you can sign up for pay by text. You can go paperless if that works for you. Auto pay, you can pay by credit card, e-check. So there's lots of options here. And of course, there's also the option of coming in and/or by mail. So if you have any questions on any of these, um, definitely give us a call. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And you can call my office at seven three four nine four two seven five eight zero. And that's all I have under my report.
Oh, Ms. Paige.
Yes.
I have a, I have a comment, Ms. Paige. I think you're doing a great job for the City of Romulus. Thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you very much. I do appreciate the compliment.
You're welcome.
Um, next on the agenda item is the public comment. Um, this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you have joined the meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to unmute when acknowledged and to mute yourself when finished. If dialing in from a touch tone phone, press star nine from your phone to raise your hand. And press star six from your phone to unmute when acknowledged. And again, press star six to mute yourself when finished. After you have been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Additional time will be upon approval of the chairperson. As a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov dot com before the end of the public comment portion. Uh, once you have been acknowledged, please state your name for the record. Mr. Chair, I see one hand raised from Gina Stewart.
Okay.
Ms. Stewart, you are being acknowledged. You can go ahead.
Uh, good evening, um, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I just wanted to make an announcement that, uh, Western Wayne County N double A C P and the Conference of Western Wayne will be having our next virtual listening tour next Thursday. It will start at five thirty. We're asking, um, people who wants to have a voice on how we're going to, um, reimagine policing in our Western Wayne County area to get on the Zoom call. So for more information, you can, uh, reach out to the Conference of Western Wayne website or also the Western Wayne County N double A C P website. And just to reiterate, that is on Thursday, January fourteenth at five thirty, and it will be, uh, on Zoom. Any questions, you guys can just reach out to me at my cell, three one three nine four nine three one three three. Thank you. And guys, uh, happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have another hand raised, um, Pastor Gene. Um, if you could state your, uh, name for the record.
Uh, Gene Overman, a pastor and instar, also, um, a part of the Instar Ministerial Alliance. I just had a couple of questions regarding your new resolution on racism. And I was very interested in the diversity of the mayor's appointees as well as the makeup in City Hall. If someone could get that information to me, just some demographic breakdown as you guys go into the planning of your, uh, resolution. And I'm speaking of racism as a healthcare issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do not see any additional hands raised or emails received, um, for this portion of the meeting.
Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna, we'll close that part out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, moving on, number nine is unfinished business.
Through the chair.
Yes, uh, Ms. Williams.
Yes, I would like to bring it back to Councilwoman. Are we ready to, uh, support a motion to stop?
Ms. Webb, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, now, that's better.
Okay. So we, I brought this up, uh, two meetings ago about, uh, supporting a motion to stop the water shut off, uh, to, uh, go along with the governor's, uh, order. So is this council ready? Because, uh, we were supposed to do that before the city attorney brought to our attention pertaining to us meeting live or meeting on Zoom? And that got extended. So are we, uh, ready? Is this council ready to, uh, support that?
Do we have a support?
Support.
Support by?
Abdo.
Ms. Abdo.
Yes. How does the motion read to, uh, freeze water shut off?
The water shut off until March the thirtieth.
Read that motion, Ms. Williams.
To follow the, um.
State guidelines.
Approve, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
To approve a motion to stop water shut off in the City of Romulus until March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, to go along with the governor's or last order. The same as, uh, the order that we will not meet, uh, in person until March the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, yeah, I support that.
Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Abdo for the extension of the water shut off. Any discussion? Here no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Here votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Number ten on the agenda is new business. That brings us to number eleven, communications.
Through the chair.
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally.
Yeah, just real quick, um, we had that study session. Um, and I brought up last week how the city gave us a, uh, update of the status of how our city is doing in the midst of COVID, in the midst of a pandemic. Um, I want to thank the, uh, administration and the team, everybody who's involved with positioning our city during this COVID, this pandemic. Um, we had a study, we talked about, had a study session a couple of weeks ago. There was a follow-up session today. And I'm just, when I say, I'm just very pleased that how our, our city is being positioned in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of, in COVID nineteen. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody, the team, the mayor, his team, um, and everybody, just pulling together, pulling together in the midst of a serious pandemic. Secondly, um, I've been talking about the virtual learning. We know as, as a result of this pandemic, you know, our kids are at home, uh, hours in front of a computer. There's a team in place right now that's trying to get, uh, with the collaboration of churches to provide a safe, learning, socially-distanced environment in our churches to help these kids with tutors and help them with their lesson plans. We, um, what this team is trying to do is gauge the interest of parents. If this is something they are looking for, for their kids, to help them during this time of this pandemic with their learning. Um, I do have to say that it seemed like Romulus is doing a pretty well job with this, but we want to, whatever resources we can do to help our kids during this pandemic. Um, I know the Ministry Alliance has a website on their, I'm sorry, on their Facebook. There's this parent survey that's circulating around and I'll have more information in, um, weeks to come. Uh, we need to gauge parent interests. Uh, we need you to fill out the survey to see the parents' interest of your kids, uh, going in a safe, in one of our churches, a safe, uh, social distance uh, environment for our kids to learn and be tutor. Um, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. I, is there other, any other communication?
Through the chair.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, as I spoke with you earlier, uh, during this time that we're not able to meet in the council chambers, I, I think it would be a really good idea if the Clerk's Office, uh, delivered the council package to the homes as they used to, especially during this time. So, uh, I definitely, uh, send that message, uh, through our deputy clerk to our clerk, uh, and ask her before the next meeting, can that happen? Because it's not just the original, uh, COVID virus, it's the second string. And it's here in the United States. And it's, you know, they don't know, they're coming up with all kind of things, but it's in the air. And, you know, in my family, we just lost a thirty-four-year-old individual. Three kids. The oldest is seven. Both of the grandparents on both sides are already gone. As Councilwoman Tally said, it's serious. We have to make sure every measure we take, we're not only having our own safety at heart, but others. The mask, the gloves, the washing of the hands, the keeping of the distance, that is so very serious. So if you can pass that on to our clerk to, um, moving forward that, um, and to keep down the traffic that our council packets as before could be delivered to the homes and that, that would also keep down traffic, uh, within the City Hall. And second, uh, just to inform the residents out there, we're still at, uh, the high school Forgotten Harvest. We start at noon. We normally end at three, that's the normal ending time, but once the food is gone, it's gone. And normally we, we go at least into two, two-thirty. And the requirements is just your name and your address and how many in the household, and we load your vehicle up. Uh, so why, uh, while this, uh, distribution is here in our city, we've been here since April, please residents, take advantage of it. If you don't need it, maybe it's someone in your neighborhood that don't have transportation and you can pick it up for them. But please, uh, take advantage of, uh, uh, this Forgotten Harvest being here in, in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say, uh, if there's no other communications, I noticed that, uh, this, this, uh, pandemic is real real. And I know all the council people, the administration, and everybody is concerned about the welfare of the health of our community. It's a scary situation. I heard some council people say they lost some people in their family. I lost people in my family to the COVID nineteen. This is real serious. We all have to get in this thing. We have to do this together. And council people, with your help, with your constituents, constituents and your residents, they are looking up to you to let them know that we care about them. And let's get through this thing together. It's because it's very serious. And be honest with you guys. I am very worried. Thank you. Ms., Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is eight seventeen and that brings us, uh, agenda item twelve adjournment.
On move.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Washworth. Was that, who's?
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, I always say, I always, Ms. Williams, you guys talk up a little louder, baby.
I'm doing my best.
I say, Mrs. Williams, okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Washworth, supported by Ms. Williams for adjournment. Mr. Washworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you.